Days, hours, and that for the middle school. Obviously, you'll need a sidebar with the union.
For this year?
No, not this year.
Oh.
It's not that we can really do much this year. I thought about it, I think, after our last meeting. It's like, why can't we just get the kids to the school earlier? So all we gotta do is get the high school kids here ten minutes earlier.
They're already here at 7:05.
Now they'll be here at 5:00 if they wanna take the bus.
School starts at 7:25.
That works out for me.
I had a question actually about-
And then you can get the middle school ten minutes early.
Do we count homeroom as educational time?
No.
So what if they started their day in their period one class instead of going to homeroom first?
That's the only thing I wanna talk to Tom about.
That could be their homeroom is their period one class.
Correct.
We've talked about it before. It has come up.
Okay.
And there was a concern.
Okay.
So it's certainly something that could easily be revisited. And it has actually already been. We've looked at it schedule-wise previously.
'Cause I looked at if the middle school can find five minutes, we get them ten minutes earlier, there's just gonna be a lull in between the middle school pickup and GMS. So the bus drivers can have a coffee, whatever they wanna do. Because it, according to Cory, it's on the contract. It's just, it's a scheduled day. So we get them there ten minutes earlier, they find five minutes, that's fifteen minutes. That's an hour and fifteen minutes per week. We make.
Why does a high school have to pay because the middle school doesn't have enough hours?
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Now, my son has to get up five minutes early or ten minutes early.
Ten minutes earlier.
Yeah.
Because the middle school doesn't have enough hours.
Why not flip-flop?
You can't.
Why?
That was just my opinion.
Because one starts earlier than the other.
Right, but change that.
It's easy getting them up.
Have LMS start before CHS and then-
It's a lot easier just getting them here ten minutes earlier.
Shouldn't they be starting at nine o'clock? Isn't that what all the studies show? That high schoolers should be starting late or not early? I don't mean to puff at them.
The problem is sports.
Yeah.
Everything after school.
Yeah. They're traveling to Manabnak or Interlakes or wherever they go.
But simply getting high school here ten minutes earlier, then you get middle school ten minutes earlier, pick up five more minutes, you have all the time you need. Thoughts?
I think it warrants some study before we make a decision.
Why don't you say we're making a decision right now?
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just throwing it out there.
It definitely is an interest, yeah.
You come up with another solution. That's, I'm telling you right now.
Just then!
Huh?
The whole room.
And I real- here's the thing. It's not out of the contract as far as the amount of hours.
Right.
It's still within the amount of hours for the teacher's contract.
Then we don't even have to talk about hours.
Now, then that, you have to be concerned at the end of the year when all of a sudden, now if you're gonna go from days to hours, and you wanna make up three or four days, now what do you do with the teachers? And they're not gonna do what they did this year, sliding a day at the end of the year. So you're gonna have to have conversations as far as more-
We'll work it out. There's time.
It'd be nice if we could do it for next year. And again, that's where it becomes sidebar, is what do you do if we do have to go to hours at the end instead of? And the thing is, we can do, if you got fifteen minutes a day for the middle school, you don't have no worries as far as hours.
Is there a maximum for the fifth graders?
I don't think they can go at 945. I think they can go beyond that. But that was something that we looked at, is 990 for. And that's the issue, is that we go from five and six, and then we do seven and eight. But we did go through it, and we came up with at least, without adding ten minutes on to our day, like you're thinking of doing, we came up with at least five minutes without even affecting that. So I think that it can be.
I like to see the five minutes. 'Cause I seen Tom's presentation the last time, he thought he had some time. And the pastime, I think, was about fourteen seconds from class to class, so.
I actually have it all right now.
That's an exaggeration, Mr. Chair.
But it's less?
Oh, yeah, it's less. It's only eleven seconds.
Well, and I wanna have a conversation with you and Tom also, as far as like, where can we save some more time? You know, if you found five minutes. But I still think the homeroom, 'cause I know we brought the homeroom up a couple years ago.
And that's where we took time, we took some of the time off of that.
Yep.
And we adjusted lunch a little bit for the upper grades, as long as we were within that contracted time, so.
Yeah.
And we were able to do that.
So-
Next year it's gonna be tight.
Well, how the, a few of you here, as far as principals, and I don't know if you had a chance to ask this question. I'm just trying to figure, and again, the LEA's not here. In the contract, it says the teachers are seven and a quarter hours, or seven and a half hours, depending what school you're at. Is there a mandatory time with time they start?
They can flex it.
What is it?
Go ahead. We say eight o'clock to 3:15.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we say that they, that they can flex it. It does, as long as they put in that amount of time during the day. If they come in earlier, they can leave early. If they come in later, they can leave later. They have to be there, obviously, for the start of the school day.
Right.
And for the end of the school day.
But especially in the middle school, because, I mean, yours is the shortest day. So your day starts at what, 7:35?
Well, the first bell goes at 7:30, the late bell is at 7:37. We have homeroom announcements, and our day starts at 7:45. We go to 2:05.
So the teacher day, what time does the teacher day start then? 7:30?
As long as, yes.
7:30.
7:30, yes.
And the day ends at 1:50?
No. And it's at, like, 2:00, we end up by 2:05.
Question.
Midasack, anything's rolling after two o'clock, a little bit after two o'clock.
Okay.
But we never, like, start announcements or anything till after two.
Just for clarification, the day ends for the students at what time?
About 2:05 is what we typically end up with.
And the teachers obviously don't leave with the students.
No.
Right.
So the teacher's day is really beyond the 2:05, when the students get out.
Right.
Okay. And so they-
I mean, if the announcements are particularly short, it might be 2:04 or 2:03, whatever.
Yeah.
It's just there's some flexibility there.
The teachers are there.
And I just wanna make sure that people listening to us understand that the teachers may be coming in at 7:30 and leaving at 2:45.
They might be coming at seven.
Or they might be coming in at seven and leaving at 2:15, but they are working their CBA track at hours.
Right. But my point was that there's some flexibility there as far as if we do get in there ten minutes earlier.
I agree. I just, I wanna be careful of the impression that the teachers are bailing out at 2:05. That's not the case.
Some may, some may not.
As long as they complete their professional obligations.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Exactly.
I'm not looking to stand any with a time clock.
Just for public. No, I know that, Mr. Chair.
I'm just, there's some flexibility there, and I think there is with the high school also, as far as the time.
And I would-
It would just be nice if we can come up with a solution as far, we've been talking about for several years, how can we get the hours if we do end up going that route? 'Cause it's unfortunate, the high school has those hours, you know, built in. We just can't get it to the others.
It's the seventh and eighth grade.
Yep.
That really is the issue.
Does anyone else have anything? We haven't any committee meetings, right? We're not sure if that's on here, so. All right. So we have the student fundraising policy and school fundraisers. I know Michelle sent an entire listing, and Tina added about fifty to it.
Some of those are already in there, and some of them, if, you know, like, the GMS PTO is their own-
But you had other PTO fundraisers in there too.
I know, I know. But when, another school, if one school came before the board and had a fundraiser approved, another school doesn't have to do it, it's district-wide. So if it's food, they just kinda put it under the umbrella of food, unless it was sweets or something like that. I, there are some that have to be added, but there are also some that I don't believe came before the board. Because, in the list you gave me, and I challenged to find it. Let's put it that way.
Well, I had some questions about this too. I, I don't know, I guess I'm just not reading the data the same way. You know, we have fundraisers from the class of 2010 and 2011. So are those that are, you know, on the chart that says that they're approved and still done, but they're not done by the class of 2010 anymore?
No, that was the class that-
That started it.
Started it.
Okay.
And even though some of them have not been done, it doesn't mean they won't be done.
Okay.
Again, and it depends on, or they may have to come before the board and just get reapproval if it's been a number of years that they haven't been done, which we've had done before.
Right, so anything on that list doesn't have to come to the board?
Right.
It just has to go through the superintendent?
Right. I guess I didn't understand the intention of the list. Was it to show, you know, how, to actually, you know, line up how many fundraisers we are doing?
I think the question of your board meeting last time we met was around, there are too many fundraisers, we're being inundated in the community with fundraisers, so how many fundraisers does a school actually have? And so what Michelle, initial list was of all of the approved fundraisers that she could define, and then we went back and Michelle collected the ones that we're still actually running. So there's two different populations here. One is the total number of approved fundraisers, and obviously you've had some additions. And then there's the fundraisers that we're actually running. And I think the board's debate is about, are we over-fundraising within the community? And if so, how do you wanna approach fundraising within the community? I think that's what the debate was, Mr. Chair.
Makes sense.
I think that's a lot of fundraisers. And I, you know, I'm guilty, I'm the fundraising coordinator for PTO, for GMS.
You've only added twelve in the last two years.
Actually, I think, I feel like we've take, well, we've gone away from the catalog sales, the door-to-door sales.
So if you, I think if you take a look at the number that you do, how many do you actually do right now at GMS?
This year we did five.
You did?
Yeah. But they were evening events.
Yeah.
And the raised praise.
Raised praise.
And selling notepads.
But I mean, that's like, small, like, within school.
Right.
And I think like the middle school also, the middle school big ones are the Krispy Kremes, candles.
The bullseyes.
Used to be, right?
Magazine.
Magazines.
Magazines.
And those are the-
Still do the pizza one?
No, uh, yes. Sixth grade does that to raise money for-
And then PTO did Yankee Candle and kid stuff coupon books last year. So, I mean, it does add up.
It does.
You know.
So outside the list, looking at the policy, I'm more concerned with the policy, especially in today's day and age. And I know that at GMS, especially with the smaller kids, they always said that they don't want you going door-to-door.
Right.
And the policy just says that students are discouraged from going door-to-door. And I'm just wondering if we should revisit that.
Revisit it?
Go ahead.
No, I am not comfortable with real young kids going door-to-door at all.
Yeah.
I think it puts young kids at significant risk. And I certainly feel, in my opinion, I don't have any research on this, just my opinion, let's be clear about it. My opinion is that your policy should limit the kind of activities where any children are going door-to-door. And the younger, the more concerned I am.
What I'm referring to when I say revisit is to be a little bit stronger language-
Oh, I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
That's what I meant, as far as discouraged.
I misinterpreted it.
Yeah.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I'm thinking more that we don't allow it, type of thing.
I wouldn't prohibit it completely, like, especially, I know, I've gone around my neighborhood with my kids.
My apologies.
You know? I think older kids too, like, high school kids have come through selling, like, those discount cards. I think that it would negatively affect the fundraising that they would, that they would do.
I think the language needs to be at least different, at least maybe like stipulate what age group can do it door-to-door.
Right, right. I mean, and at GMS, I'm graduating this year, but I'm hopeful that it will continue to, like, we've kinda changed how we did things. We haven't done catalog sales for the past two years, you know? Raised praise was all done online with parent supervision, and then we had-
And a lot of fundraisers are going that route also, as far as online.
Right, right. Could be, but there's still a lot of, it's a lot of selling going on.
In this town.
In this town. And it, there is a lot.
Yeah.
There's really a lot.
One of the things that I, I kinda had a sense of in Litchfield, is that it's somewhat of a combination of private and public funding for the public schools in the following sense, that it was the first district I've been in where you have so many, I mean, athletic teams that are actually driven by raising their own funding to support them. And where you have the number of funding challenges that you offer throughout the district. And I was struck by the amount of money raised in the district that supports the public schools. And I, in my head, I kinda thought it was kind of a, a bit of a private school model in enhancing the district where parents want enhancement in certain areas, but they don't wanna go to the budget process because we all realize that we're a very frugal district in terms of the budget. So if you're going to change the capacity to raise money in fundraising, I think you have to take a look at how, what's the bigger picture and how that impacts your ability to offer the diversity of opportunities that you currently offer to students without impacting your bottom-line budget. And I would just think you might wanna think about that.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I personally don't think there's a need as far as to change the process right now.
Okay.
I think just to protect the kids, at least in the elementary school, that we may want to look at our policy and verbiage. I think once you get to middle school, it's a little bit different, and definitely what you're at high school, I think it's different. I know that any of the fundraisings that have been done, to the best of my knowledge, at GMS, they never are encouraged to, or never even told to go door-to-door, that they don't want it being door-to-door.
I think we've told them not to.
Yeah.
When we used to do catalog sales.
With the parent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm not sure how it is in the middle school.
The middle school, a lot of the fundraising happens, but we don't tell them not to go. However, a lot of what happens is the parents take the forms to work, and it's done a lot that way.
Yeah.
I do find it interesting, like, what Jim was saying about, you know, our residents, our parents, you know, to some degree, you know, they want as tight a budget as possible, but then they end up paying for the same things.
They get coupons.
Through the fundraiser. Through the fundraisers.
Right.
You know, it's just an interesting culture that we have here in Litchfield.
'Cause then it's a choice.
Right, and those who can afford to support it.
True, yeah.
Support it to the level that they can.
Right.
And thankfully, we have a very generous community.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
One thing, I mean, you mentioned that the whole private school thing, and to me, it's interesting, 'cause some of these charter schools, I didn't realize they were actually public charter schools. And they do their own fundraisers. Like, for example, there was Founder's Academy did a Veterans Day event, and they actually had an annual appeal tied to it. So, I mean, if we wanna start, like, lowering the need for fundraisers, maybe we, if we wanna go that, I mean, we don't have to do it now, but, you know, just, it was an interesting concept.
Sounds like a church thing, the Cardinals' appeal.
Yeah.
I know. And again, I think that there are people in town who would wanna support, like, maybe this money goes to a certain fund for certain purposes, you know, 'cause there are a lot of people that are really, really vested in this town. So, just, you know.
I was gonna say, I think that would be up to the individual schools, and then even broken down the individual groups who would wanna do it, rather than, you know, the school's not in a position to go out there and start, Scott's not gonna go out there and start fundraising for whatever he needs. I mean, it's just not-
Well, I know it was a volun-
Yeah.
It was a volunteer group. You know? I know the person who was in charge of that annual appeal, and she was a fundraiser by-
Did she get paid for that?
Full-time. I am sure she didn't. Her kids go there.
Just kidding.
Anyway, just throwing it out there.
One of the things I think you might wanna think about starting in the future is an education foundation. And get a 403, 403B, tax, a 403C, tax status, so that you can then fundraise and have it tax-deductible, so that people can give you money and still have a certain degree of capacity to deduct that from their taxation. And I think you would find that a Litchfield Education Foundation with the right leadership would raise a significant amount of money that could be used for whatever the charge of that foundation would be. And I think that's, you know, something that would be very helpful to the educational community. We did start one, and it was very successful, and I know many districts that have education foundations are very successful.
All right. Next, we have minutes from- Minutes from April 18th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 18th, 18th meeting? Thank you.
Good second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, also, favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 400. And that will bring us to our principals' reports. It looks like-
I think that Mr. Lonigan had expressed a desire to go first.
Sure.
Sure.
I apologize for being late. I was up in Concord for, two of our freshmen received their Francis Whelan Parker Awards, okay, which is really awesome, the only two freshmen in the state that were recognized for this, so it's great that they came from Campbell, so I'm pleased about that. Travis, Travis Tucker and Abby-
Buxton?
Yes, Abby Buxton.
Awesome.
Amazing, yeah.
Awesome. That's great.
Yep. So unfortunately, I had to scoot out early to come back for this. I would've taken a little more time, actually, if I knew, I'd be delighted getting on, but it's good to be here. So a couple of things, I forwarded along some information from NESSC that sort of supplemented what I presented last time. And this, it kinda gave me a better, a little bit better feeling after last, two weeks ago after our meeting. And the first one, the top sheet that you have is the, and I apologize for this, this is not my typing, but every time I look at this page, I cringe. Post-secondary enrollment of high school graduate dates within two years.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
For those of us careful readers, yeah, former English teacher. So in looking at this, these are, this top sheet here is really students who go back in for that, for that second year at an institution. And it's broken down, if you look on the left-hand column, by state, so it's Connecticut, Maryland, Rhode Island, Vermont, New Hampshire. And then, we don't have the information from the 20, from the 09 grads, but I took the information from the, from the National Clearinghouse, and I looked at our information for students, and it was actually rather pleasing. I just simply did the basic math, added up our students who returned for that second year. Our 2010 grads, we had 76% of those students go back for their second year. If you look at that column, that's better than every other state's numbers there. Okay? So looking at that, I, okay, breathe a sigh of relief. If you look at the 2011 grads, we had 72.5% of our students go back for a second year. If you go to 2012, we took a little drop from there, down to 70.6, which is still above all of those other states and the mean numbers for those states. And if you look at the 2013 grads, we're at 69.9%, 70%, which is better than all of them except for Connecticut. So, you know, in looking at that, I didn't quite feel as-
Depressed?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's depressing, yeah.
And that's why I asked you, like, where does that fall within the state averages?
Sure. And if you look at the second page there, for those students who were enrolled after that first year of entering college, those numbers, if you, let me scroll down on my computer so I make sure. If you look at those numbers, so, again, I only have information from our 2010 through 2013. Our 2010 class, we had 90% of our students. That looks pretty good in comparison to the other states. Our 2011, we took a drop, 82%, but still within the range of the other states, okay? Not quite as good as the rest of New Hampshire, not quite as good as Connecticut. If you look at 2012, 91% of our students, which is significantly higher than most of those other states. And the 2013 was 94% of our students.
Wow.
Right.
I feel so much better.
So, you know, right. So, thinking about that, I started breathing a little bit, a little bit more evenly. So I just figured I would sort of throw this into the mix a little bit more about our students who are going to school, they're sustaining at a higher rate than is common in some of those other states, which is an encouraging piece for me.
So I know you weren't here that year that it dipped, but, I mean, that's a big dip between those two numbers.
Yes.
You were in the nineties, and you go down to, what, 82, and then back up in the nineties?
Right. Sometimes you have a class, a cohort, that, you know, even as a cohort, isn't necessarily as strong as others. I don't know what was going on here with that class in 2011, seven years ago, so Bob probably was principal at that time?
And he was-
Or probably is the tail end of Bob's, in the start of Laurie's.
It was Bob.
It was Bob, yep. So I'm not sure what was going on there, but I kinda looked at the bump and went, hmm, that's, that's a little interesting piece. I can't answer as to why that might have happened.
From my perspective, it's the trend lines that are really significant, not the aberrations from your trend lines. So if your trend lines are going in the right direction over three, four years, I think that the high school's putting out a heck of a good product. And you are gonna get aberrations in any data set. So I, I mean, I think it's good data, very good data.
So, so, just a couple of other things, just to sort of go back on assessments. We are starting the NIOAs next week, and students are gonna be taking their maps, the measures of academic progress in their English and math classes. We are, we are also doing the kneecap science, which is no longer the kneecap science, but it's the AIR testing, which is going to take place next week. And we, the state released to students their SAT scores, however, they have not released them to the schools. So last year for some, I think last year, my understanding was they released them early, and there was some problems with the numbers they released to schools. So I think they're being a little bit more cautious this year. The whispers are that sometime around May 20th, the school should be getting that information. So I hope as soon we can take a look at that and take a look back at how our students have done in comparison to this year, so.
It's kinda why they can release it to the students, but they can't release it to the school.
I have no idea who's up at the state and what they're doing up there in terms of this, but, yeah, the students have it, we do not.
Just laughing.
Okay.
No comment.[1570.52] No comment?
No comment, right. Yep, yeah, I, hopefully soon, but not yet.
The other thing I would compliment is the whole system, because the high school, oftentimes we thank the high school for the kids' success in college. But I really think you have to take a look at the whole system, because the high school really inherits what we've worked on with our kids for the previous nine or ten years. And they have, you know, a lot of pressure for the kids to have success. But at the same time, if they don't inherit really well-educated kids coming to the ninth grade, it puts them at a very big disadvantage. So I think that the success rate in college and the entrances in college is really a systemic output which the high school finishes. So thank you very much, but also thank the middle school and the elementary school.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Yeah, it's a lot of good information. It was, it was nice being able to see, like, a little bit bigger picture.
Mm-hmm, yes, it was.
Now, of course, if it hadn't been good news, I wouldn't have said that.
It's all in the high school.
It's that high school.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clearly, in either case, it is neither. It is, it is a.
It's the whole.
It's a system.
Yep.
Yes.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Longing? Thank you very much. So, that brings to Mr. Thompson, if he's ready. Technology.
Hopefully, this will.
Did you have to leave, Mr. Longing?
I, I can wait, uh, about another twenty minutes or so.
I think you should feel free to leave if you have to. Your, your schedule's extremely hectic with the accreditation coming in on the twentieth and getting ready for that. So certainly feel free to leave. From my perspective, I'm sure the board agrees with me a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you want us to be able to see this?
Um, you have the same thing in, on your computer, I think, or paper, so it was really for the home audience. But I'd like to begin, um, if I may, just mention a couple things in my general principles report. I'll be very brief. I just wanna update you on incoming K and one for next year. So currently, we have fifty-one in our kindergarten, but we're online to have sixty-six in grade one for next year, which means an additional fifteen who have registered. And we currently have sixty-six enrolled for kindergarten next year. Our ballpark guess was seventy-one, because we looked at projections and how many we've gained. So I think we're getting close to that. Um, so I did wanna mention that.
You'll still continue picking them up on a regular, don't you normally pick them up through the summer?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, people, um, I think we'll have less of that, because there's been so much publicity about kindergarten. But typically, uh, people do, um, they either move in the summer, that happens a lot with families, or they wait and enroll later. Some people are still, um, on the public school, private school fence. Um, I think the fact that we have full day is a big bonus for people.
And I think if you just drive around town right now, there are quite a few houses up for sale.
Also, I'm amazed, I look at the sales sign, it becomes a sold sign the next time I look at it.
I know.
Scott, based on your previous enrollment, are you anticipating that your staffing needs are still where they were when you put your budget in, or are you anticipating?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the grade that's going to be kind of crowded next year, and the teachers have noted it, we're going from five grade threes to four grade fours. And, um, we have, I believe it's.
Eighty-seven right now.
Yeah, um, students, oh, I have it right in front of me. We have ninety in grade three. So what changes at grade four is our class size policy.
Right.
So at grade three and below, we have three for twenty, but we allow twenty-three in grade four. So, you know, that's, yeah, it's.
You're right at the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was looking at a couple of playbooks.
Yeah, you're twenty-two point five, so clearly you're tight.
The other thing I'll just, I'll mention two things really quickly, 'cause I know you have all of this and it's available for the public. I just wanna wish our Lego Robotics team's a great thing on Saturday. I'm looking forward to seeing them at Bishop Brady. We're going to see that. And I also wanna mention that I did get to participate in the Alice Drill at, um, the elementary school.
Hills Garrison, Nottingham?
It, no, it's the one right next to Alvin. Um, the name has gone out of my head.
Hills Garrison?
It's, did you say?
No, that's where I am. It's either Nottingham or.
Yeah, it's something Hills, I think.
What'd you think?
But it was really interesting to see the Alice Drill. This was grades two through five. And, um, I also, I'd like to thank the Hudson District for allowing me in. They let me sit in the debrief, too. What I was really curious to see is how the Alice training and all the training videos, what we saw is high school kids barricading doors. I wanted to see at least, you know, how that gets kind of brought down to an elementary level. And, um, and we, they only go down to grade two. We go to three-year-olds. Um, so we still have some research to do, but they did explain to me that they did, they began with an enhanced lockdown, where instead of just all being in one place, they had the kids be active participants. So, um, and then they did this drill, and they announced a scenario, and then the teachers had to make on-the-spot decisions as to whether to lock down or exit. So it was interesting to see.
They do four, four passive drills? That's what they did at the middle school, four passive drills. It was fascinating.
Yeah. So I felt better prepared, having seen that, uh, when we get to that point next year. I just felt that was important.
Do you have a question about that, Scott? When we were talking about the Alice training, you know, online, some of the parents were very concerned about what, actually, when we had the lockdown, when we had the lockdown drill.
Yes, yeah.
Um, a lot of the parents were concerned with, what were, what was my kid told by the teacher? Um, you know, how did they present this to my student? Because if, you know, a fire drill, let's pretend there's a fire, that's very easy to, to kinda send that one message. Um, the concern was that certain, you know, there's, there could be a lot of, different teachers are gonna use different languages, language with their kids. Um, and that resource that you sent out, um, from the first-grade teacher who, you know, they used this book.
Yes, we've ordered that book.
That's, yeah. So I think, you know, in going forward, I don't know if that's something that Alice hands down to you and, and passes on to the teachers, that is there, will there be like a unified message that, like, what is the story that all of the kids are going to hear? And how do we, how do we make them understand without, you know, scaring them?
And that's part of the training. Um, the title of the book is something like, uh, we have six or seven copies, "I'm Not Afraid: I've Learned About Alice," or something like that. So it's, you know, it's kid cartoony characters, and it's just talking to kids about how to be prepared and to, you know, prepare them emotionally. So we haven't gotten that far. We haven't trained all the staff yet.
Yeah.
But when we do, then we have those books and, you know, we have a copy for grade level.
In our middle school, we used the term "active shooter."
Yeah.
We used it all. We did a four passive scenarios and then one active one where the teacher, we used the word "active shooter." And they're heading down this hallway, what is your teacher gonna do?
Yeah.
That someone came in in the loading dock and he has a wrench, he's not stopping for custodians, that was a passive drill, what are you gonna do? I think this is sixth, seventh, and eighth. I don't think you can get a four- or five-year-old active shooter. That's really scary.
I think the word they used at, um, the school, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name right now, um, was there was a, an, an intruder in the building on the first floor, heading towards the elevators. So that gave people enough information that they had to think, okay, what would I do in this situation? And so the second floor with the back entrance had a different response than the first floor.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, so it was a really good thing to see.
Glad you got to see it, yeah. Well, you did, that's great.
Alrighty, so I'll focus on data. I apologize I gave you so many pages, but, um, if, if it's overwhelming. But I promise I'm not going to stay on, on them a long time. I just want you to see an overall pattern. But what I did do, um, I felt it was important, when we're talking about elementary students, to begin with context. So, um, MAP testing goes up quite high in the grades. I'm not quite sure. I think we use it at the high school, too, right? NWA testing. I know it goes to the middle school. And it's really designed as a growth model. We have moved for like three or four years. We only do it once a year at most grades, and it moved to the fall. Um, when I first arrived, we did it fall and spring. And frankly, what happened is we moved from October kneecap assessments to spring smarter balanced assessments. In addition, our fourth graders had to do, um, kneecap science testing. And we also, every other year, get randomly selected to do NAEP testing. So we, there was so much testing that the district, you know, it was a, a big discussion, K through twelve, we only do this in the fall, except for grade one. What that means is it doesn't really show us growth across the season. It show, you know, we could compare fall of last year to fall of this year. What I, we also added is the, the Ames Web Benchmark Testing, and I'm gonna show you some reports that show how we can see that there's growth occurring within that. The other thing, I just wanna mention a few things to frame this, um, is that the test administration. So you have to imagine incoming kindergarten students. In grades K and one, the Ames Web Test that we're going to see the data for, those who are administered one-on-one without kids using technology. And that seems really a lot more appropriate. The students have a, um, printed prompt that they look at, and then the teacher records data on a, you know, one-on-one basis on a, um, an online reporting form. By contrast, the MAP testing, we have students do on Chromebooks, beginning in the fall of grade one. And we actually, they have to, um, I was able to see some of it last fall. They actually have to click and drag responses onto a spot on the screen to show that they understand math and reading concepts. So there's a real technological challenge. As you know, we don't actually offer computer training until grade two. So, um, it's not until the fall of grade three where students have had the benefit of computer class. I just wanna say that, because I think that what we'll see as we go through these is a clear indication of why full-day kindergarten is going to be important to our district. We also stress during the, the, um, public, you know, informational sessions, um, why it's important. Nationally, eighty-one percent of children who go to kindergarten, you may remember this fact, are enrolled in full-day kindergarten. And so only nineteen percent are not. Litchfield is one of the few communities that have not had full-day kindergarten to this point. But we are one of nine who proposed it, and as you know, it was successful. In addition, we have a changing cohort. Only sixty-one percent of our current first graders, I'll give you this in writing, Michelle, so you can capture some of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, actually attended our kindergarten, because we have a big changeover. All of which means what we're really doing at the elementary level is playing catch-up. And I think what you'll see is that we are catching up. So now I'm gonna jump into the math results. So I began with MAP testing, because for grade one, we actually do have, uh, winter and fall results. And I'm gonna look at my highlighted copies. Oh, there is one other thing I have to say. I'll wait till I get to, um, the, um, Ames Web to talk about that. So what we can see, um, from fall to winter, fall is the first two pages of this. And you can see the incoming first graders, twenty-eight percent were in the lowest quintile, and twenty-two percent in the second lowest, which meant that fifty percent of our students were below average in beginning math skills coming in. I'm going to jump to page three, and I will explain on the way, that this shows, um, the breakout by, um, big conceptual areas. So we have, um, operations and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations, measurement and data geometry. The good news is by winter, this is page three of the presentation.
I, can I just, I'm not sure I'm on the right, but I see all these same graphs, but I have a forty-page document and you have a ten-page document.
Okay, so.
Am I not looking at the right one?
I'm sorry.
At the top of the very top left-hand corner, there should be a number.
Oh, yeah.
It's a page number.
Oh, okay. Look at that page number then.
So what you're looking for is the file, it may be, I think they were broken out. It says MAP Math.
Okay.
And NWA Math.
I put them in order of pages, so they should be able to follow now.
Okay, thank you.
So by the winter of grade one, we had, um, moved from twenty-eight percent of the students in math in the lowest quintile down to fifteen, and from twenty-two to twenty-one. But we also had increased pretty substantially at the top end, because we're, in the high average, moved from eighteen to twenty-five percent, and from nine to eighteen percent in the very high group. So what that shows me, and that was with twenty weeks of instruction, you can see up in the top right-hand corner that there were twenty weeks of instruction, that even with mixed backgrounds, our students had made very good progress in math. And then, um, if we look at the higher grades, what we'll see pretty quickly is that those percentages get much better. On page five. Um, whoops, I went too far. By grade two, we only have eleven percent. Now, this is a different cohort, but I think it shows the developmental progression through the school. Only eleven percent of the students are in the lowest quintile, only thirteen in the next lowest, and our students are migrating up to the higher end. And that's what we want to see. Grade three is on page seven. And there we have only six percent in the lowest quintile. Now, remember, we had, in grade one, we had twenty-eight percent. And we have only ten percent in the next lowest, and now most of our students have moved over here. And by grade four, um, and I will just say that, um, as a cohort, grade four has a very high percentage of students with disabilities. I just think it's important that you understand that. It's about thirty percent of the class. So, um, that level of information is available on state reports, so I think it's okay that I say that. But even at that, um, we have thirty-three percent in the lowest two quintiles, and most of our students still are in the average to high-average range. So that shows kind of a progression K through four for math. I'm going to jump to the, um, the math Ames Web reports, because this actually, um, we do three times a year. And I'll explain what these graphs show. The light colors, this is page eleven of the really long doc- document. Um, first of all, let me explain what some of the numbers mean. So this is early numeracy benchmark, fall of this year. And it's, it says K one, it's both grades here. So what I wanna explain about Ames Web, 'cause it's different than assessments at any other grade, is that they are, by, by design, essentially developmental. And I gave you a chart that I handed around at the beginning of the meeting, just to kinda show you that. By, the fall testing in Ames Web, um, for math, ta- does number naming fluency, which is simply recognizing a written number, total, quantity total fluency, which is recognizing and being able to count dots up to ten, and concepts and applications, which covers the broad areas of counting and cardinality, algebra, base ten numbers, measurement of data, geometry, um, and one- or two-step word problems. That's all covered in the fall of kindergarten. In winter, we stay the same, but we also add something called quantity difference fluency, which is comparing sets of dots up to six and saying which one is bigger, um, that kind of thing. But look at what happens by the beginning of grade one in number, um, the early numeracy. All of the things that we've tested before, most of them are no longer tested. And what you see is we're all automatically doing something quite different. We're doing still number comparison fluency. But we're also doing, um, a one-minute ti- uh, time test for math facts fluency, which is adding and subtracting up to ten, and concepts and applications, which is a written thing that the kids do, that continues. Um, and then we add in the winter of grade one, math facts fluency, um, in tens. So that's adding or subtracting ten from a given number. So over that year and a half, the test itself has changed dramatically, and I just, um, reading is even more dramatic. But I just want you to understand that. From grades two through four, the test actually is more stable. So then they do number comparison fluency in triads, a group of three, and they say, is the middle number closer to the high number or the low number? So kids have to subtract and add, um, mental computation, and they continue with concepts and applications. So what does this graph show us? The box shows us the national distribution of scores at that grade level at that time of year. And this shows us our school's distribution of scores. The dark line right here is the, is the aim line. There's a key up here that shows us that that is the target. That's where we would like kids to be. And then the median score for our group is the dotted line. What we can see is, starting in the fall, our students were actually, the median score was below the national median score. And then this is grade one. Here is the aim line, the target. Here is our median score, and here is the median score. Now, keep in mind, this is a very large national sample of students who went to full-day kindergarten. If I go to the next page, this is now the winter of this fall. And what you can see is that we have moved up, actually, um, in kindergarten somewhat, not a whole lot, but quite a dramatic improvement in grade one. So for me, that shows that our programs are working, the teachers are doing the right thing. I think that the importance of a full-day program is really evident in this. Here are some comparisons in other grades. This is again for math. So this is grade two, and, uh, this is, I believe, the fall. And grade three, you can see, here's the target, here's our median score. We're now above the national average median score. In grade three, um, here's the target. We're well above the national average, and our, um, the median score for our group is well above the national median score. That's really good news. This is grade, um, four, and this is again in the fall. And, uh, we begin with our median score well above the national average. And most students, only these are not, have not met the target as we come into grade four.
So Scott, I think that's been the norm between grades three and four, that there's a dip. Is that correct?
Usually, there's a dip in fourth grade and in fifth grade, what I've seen.
Yeah.
Um, I would say some years that may be true, and it kinda goes back and forth between reading and math. I'm not sure, I couldn't, I don't, I didn't do that historic piece for you, but I can.
No, that's right. It's, in this year, anyway, it shows a little bit of a dip.
Well, this is again incoming fourth grade, right?
Yeah.
And a class with its, so yes, if we, again, we're comparing different cohorts. But as I explained, the, the makeup of that cohort is, each one is unique, you know? But this is, these are the charts what I thought would be of particularly in. But this is, these are the charts what I thought would be of particular interest. Whoops, well, this is actually the same thing in winter. And again, this is math. You can see that the target is, most of our students are really above the target, that's grades two, three, and four. These are the charts that I think are very telling. Did you have a question?
I did, just in terms of our benchmarks, because we asked Mr. Lonigan, who is a different person sitting in the seat now, but we asked him for comparison to state averages, and these are comparing to national. Is there a rationale between that, or what is the...
I don't, we don't have state data for Ames Web. The norms are only the national norms. Okay? Yep.
So when we have both, we prefer to look at New Hampshire, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Both Ames Web and NWA are built on national norm sets, so I don't believe that there's any state data. We looked at that, actually, when we were doing the kindergarten. All right, so this is a tier transformation. This model reflects kind of the relative academic health, if you will, of an entire class. Tier one in this model represents those students who are very low risk of not meeting their spring benchmark. We haven't done those yet, those are coming up. This represents students who are at moderate risk, and those represent students who are at high risk. And this shows the same cohort from fall to winter, which is why I thought these would be particularly interesting.
Mr. Thompson, do you use the tier three for RTI number purposes?
We use this, I'll talk more about all the things we do. We do use this data for Title One, for the reading tutors, the math tutors, for all of those groups, and I'll cover a bit of that. But down here, this is the fall-to-winter transition. I think these charts are particularly interesting. Fifteen percent, that's eight, N is the number, eight students began in the high risk in the fall, and in the winter, five of them were still in high risk, and this is, I believe, K. But two had moved up to the yellow, which is an improvement. Of the fourteen students in the yellow, five had slipped, three were still at the yellow, but six had moved up. And of the thirty-one who began in the green in the fall, twenty-six were still there, and five had slipped. So there's always going to be some variation. But overall, this is again K, fall to winter. What it actually shows is we have more students in the red, we have fewer here, and about the same in the green, right? So that's not, those are not stellar results, and I get that. But again, I think it speaks to full day, because the national norm is full day.
To see what it looks like next year.
This is much more encouraging. This is grade one, okay? So in grade one, this is the makeup in the fall. Again, students incoming with very little, well, with less experience than the national norm. By the winter, most of the students you can see are at very low risk of not meeting their spring benchmark, and that's really important change. And then we go to grade two. You can see a similar shrinking top, which is what we want to see, and expanding bottom. And again, the numbers are down here. In grade two, sixty students started in the tier one, and fifty-eight remained, but you can see that they're not showing up here. Those must be students who moved or were not tested for some reason. But these moved, more than half moved up to the green, and of the students who began here, twelve, five were in the green by the winter. This is like very encouraging kind of news. This is grade three for math. So you can see, I mean, we had great results in the fall or great beginnings, and it's just gotten better. I mean, we have seventy-nine of eighty-nine students at low risk for not meeting their spring benchmark. That's what that's telling us. And then grade four, not bad. We have, you know, fewer and fewer students even at grade four, and the demands, of course, are much greater, who are at risk.
That's this year's cohort?
That's what?
That's this year's cohort with the thirty percent?
Yeah, this is grade four in the fall, and grade four in the spring, I mean, in the winter. Whoops, sorry, I don't know what I'm doing. Okay? That's for math. So I'm going to switch, unless you have questions, I'm going to just kind of walk you through the reading and show you where we are for that. What I don't want to do is X-out too far, I often do that. Okay, whoops. So this is incoming grade one. Again, they're testing on computers and don't have a lot of experience, but this is for reading. We have thirty-seven percent of the students in the lowest two cohorts in the fall. And the other thing I will just point out, this is probably fairly typical, the overall RIT score for the students is one fifty-nine. And if you look at the sub-areas, and I meant to do this in math, too, they're fairly consistent, which means there aren't areas that are much more weak or strong than others. There are some grades and classes where that's not true, like at grade two, I believe, in measurement and data was weak in the fall, and they get it by grade three. So I think it comes later in the curriculum. That often is the case, that kind of thing. This is grade one in the winter, and we're still having challenges, and you'll see that in the tier transition reports as well. But again, we're playing catch-up, so the students are not, you know, they're working and they are progressing. The other thing I'll add at this point is that these same reports, this is the whole grade, they're available at the class level, and also, of course, for individual students. And I'll tell you how we use that when we get to it. This is grade two for reading. We have, in the fall, yep, we had twenty percent and fifteen percent there in the lowest two. And you can see we also get more and more students in the top two, these are above average, twenty-five and twenty-eight percent. That's a general trend. Once the students catch on, they tend to excel. This is grade, it's not screaming to me, it's right there.
Two, two.
Do you see it?
Yeah, two.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I was looking in the wrong place. This is in the fall. I was anticipating, oh, that's the breakout scores. This is grade three in the fall, and there you can see we have only six percent of the students, and six percent of the students, but twelve in the average range, thirty-two percent in the high average, and forty-four percent by the time we get to, for the very high students. And that tends to be a progression that we see. Once again, these numbers are fairly consistent, the overall RIT is two hundred, and each of the sub-areas hover right around that. It shows consistent, consistent success. And I'm going to switch, oh, grade four, I don't think I got there yet. So grade four, we have only nine percent in the lowest quintile, and fourteen percent in the second lowest, but we have eighteen percent in the average range, thirty-four in the high, and twenty-five in the very high. So those are all very positive. I'm going to switch and show you the, those transition charts in Ames Web for reading. I'll hover pretty quickly on the, these charts. So this is the range of scores for our school again, and this is nationally, this is kindergarten in the fall and grade one in the fall. And again, you can see our norm is, the median score is below the national in both grades. And this is the winter of grade one and grade K, and we actually, again, are losing ground compared to the national cohort, but this is expanded. You can see the blue is substantially expanded, which means we have more students in the above-average range by winter in grade one for reading. And this is grades two, three, and four, the target line. We're right on at the start of grade two, the same median score as the national norms. By grade three, our students are well above, and this is really exciting. Here's the target line for grade three reading. And so this is, I believe, the fall, and all of the students are above the target according to that. And then this again shows median scores for grade four, and we're above the national. These are the winter results for grades, yeah, this is winter for grades two through four, and again, most of our students have met the target by winter, and you'll see that reflected in those tier transition charts. This is grade four. Here is the target line and the median score for our students compared to nationally.
Do all students take the tests? Are there any exceptions? No?
If there are, it's not planned. I mean, we aim for a hundred percent.
Okay.
So, you know, I, there are some exceptions, not for these, but, well, I will just share, we have had parents object to the state testing.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, so, you know, that, we're just finishing up. So this is more of those charts. Sorry, I want to get to tier transition. So this is the tier transition chart for early literacy, kindergarten, and you can see we actually did make some ground in shrinking the red group. The yellow group vastly expanded, and we lost ground with those at low risk. So what it shows me again is compared to nationally, our students don't keep up in kindergarten. But this is grade one, same cohort fall to winter in reading, and they are catching up there. So the middle is shrinking, the top is really growing, and the red zone is also shrinking.
It's too bad we didn't have those tier transition charts when we were proposing full day. That really would have come in handy.
Yeah, it would have been good.
[laughing]
Oh, well.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
We got it anyway, I know.
We had a lot of charts.
More supportive evidence.
So this is grade two reading, tier transition, and again, I mean, I think these are so visual, I thought these are a great tool to kind of show how that same cohort is growing. I obviously can't get into student-specific. This is grade three reading. It's almost all green, you know, so I think that's really awesome. And again, this is really just a prediction of whether they'll meet the spring benchmark. That's what that's showing us. And this is grade four. So the green has grown, the red has grown a little. It's, we're talking one or two students, to put that in perspective. We went from six here, there were four in the winter, and I don't know why it's bigger with that being the case, and two had moved to yellow, but it does look bigger, but it's fewer students. So in a nutshell, those demonstrate growth across grades, I believe, and also within grades, and that's what I wanted to show. And to Tina's question, nope, Liz's question, how do we use it? We have a CAT team, it's called, which is Collaborative Assistance Team, and so if a teacher has tried a variety of things in the classroom and they're still stuck, they'll bring a student to CAT, they invite in the parents. We look at where they've, you know, how they're doing with the individual results of these assessments. They try other things. Ultimately, if they try things and they don't work, then the student may get referred to special education, because we've tried things and they're not working. So yes, we use it that way. In addition, we have a school-wide program, which I think people are pretty familiar with by now, called SOFA Reading, which is, it was an invention, actually, of a former assistant principal and reading specialist, Connie Farrow. But what it really is, is small group instruction for all students based on where they fall within those charts. We have Title One reading and math tutors who use this information to select students for targeted assistance. We have students, of course, then, who may get IEPs, in some cases, 504 plans, to provide accommodations or in IEPs modifications. We have summer programs, we use the same data to help select students, teachers make referrals, and then we invite students either through regular education or through extended year programs in special education, or for continuation of Title One math services. We have actually just sent out those letters in the last week inviting people. And in addition, we use the information to look at teacher development and teacher professional development opportunities. This year, we had Greg Tang math. In the past, we had Greg Mahesh Sharma come in and work with our teachers. We have teachers who have attended workshops in sixth-级 writing. I know a few teachers have, I think they've done this at the middle school as well, keys to literacy for comprehension strategies, not many, but I do believe we have some. So those are the things that we do, and the goal, of course, is to be at grade level by the end of grade three. So what I see is very promising in that regard, so. I know it's a lot of pages, I hope that was...
It's a little bit easy to understand, so next time we're at fourth, it's gonna, you know, have a better understanding. But if you send pictures with the low-colored crayons, then I'd really get the idea.
[laughing]
Okay.
So Scott, have you, I know you mentioned several times, and we all agree that full-day kindergarten is definitely going to help that transition happen quicker. Do you have any data on students that have attended our kindergarten versus not?
So none at all. It's not many who have not attended any program.
No, but I know that some of the transition, it's more difficult that they're not been at our kindergarten.
Yes. I think I could find that out, because I do think I made a list last fall of the students who didn't come in.
Yeah.
What I will tell you is that those who didn't attend, as I recall, our kindergarten, many of them actually attended a full-day program. But when I compared the, yeah, the, you know, the ones that went to our half-day program, I didn't see a big difference in the two cohorts, you know? So that's, I did look at that last year, so. And some attended a different public kindergarten, but I don't really have knowledge of whether that was half-day or full-day. But I know most who would go to private kindergarten, it is a full-day program, is from what I understand, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Grab the cord.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not gonna take that.
Well, they're getting ready. I mean, I've been in the business for a long time, and it's just amazing to me, the level of analysis and the amount of statistical data that's used today versus even ten or fifteen years ago, let alone thirty years ago. I mean, this kind of a dialogue, if I had asked, or even if I had attempted it twenty years ago, it would not have happened. You know? I mean, partly because we do have the data, but I mean, just the difference in our expectation of elementary and secondary principles today with regards to data analysis is just, just huge. I mean, it's good.
Yeah.
I mean, Scott's sharing with you the general data, but I assure you that the individual data for each student goes a long ways to driving the prescriptive kind of education as opposed to just one-size-fits-all. And that's really great for the kids.
Scott, can I have a question for you? I know that we've reduced, well, we've tried to reduce the number of, the amount of testing that especially our fourth graders have to do.
Yes, yeah.
Are we, are we getting, are we testing our students too much?
Well...
For the data that we get?
Yeah, it's a good question. We've, you know, I hope that we have a dialogue about that, I guess is what I would say. Are we testing too much? What I wanted to share, the background about MAP testing and Ames Web... What I wanted to share, the background about MAP testing and AIMS Web, is they really kind of test different things, and they have different functions. So, the NWA MAP testing is really... It's called the Growth Model Assessment. It can be used and is used to show growth from fall to winter to spring for individual students and classes in the entire school. There can be some redundancy in what we do. But the benchmarking, the one that shows the tier transition, it really has a slightly different function. It's... Most of those are one-minute assessments. I didn't really say that. So, it's just like taking a temperature, you know, for the kids. It's like an early warning system, if you will. So, it's not the same as, like, the state summative testing. It's not the same as that. So, they have different functions. I think that among the teachers, there was a lot of desire to do... To keep MAP testing. Well, it was a trade-off. They liked the information they gained by having the NWA MAP testing, I'll just call it MAP testing, in the fall and at least in the spring. Because they could see their own students, how they progressed, how they ended up. That gave them more information about that cohort in that school year. So, I think it was a loss that we don't do that. On the other hand, we have the AIMS Web. And I'd say, among teachers, there's kind of mixed reviews about that. You know, we've had initial conversations about, could we switch to a different kind of benchmarking? And there are other programs that might be done. When I say "we," I don't mean just GMS. I think administratively, we've talked about other, different approaches. So, we always guess. We do test a lot, to answer your question directly. Could we eliminate some? Well, that's why we gave up the spring MAP testing. But, you know, maybe we give up something different. We can't give up the state testing.
Right.
We can't give up the NAEP testing if we get asked again. And we did give up science. We gave that to grade five.
(laughing).
We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for that, Scott.
So, that was good.
Because we want to do more at the middle school.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Are you?
I hope so.
You have crayons?
So, Tom prepared this for you. And I'm just... I'm presenting on his behalf. He's in Washington, DC with our eighth graders this week. They are having lovely weather. They hit a little traffic yesterday. Got there a little later than they had anticipated, but had a very fun and uneventful evening. And today, we're off to the White House and to other sites. So, they are enjoying themselves. And Tom, I'm sure, has his hands completely full with all of those eighth graders. So, I'm going to just start...
If I could just interrupt, just to, like, probably streamline a little bit, because it looks like you have, like, the same information what Scott has presented.
Yeah, and he did a wonderful job of that, didn't he?
He did.
And I want to thank him. Scott, I just want to say, it's always good coming after.
(laughing).
Because you do a great job.
Oh, I thank you so much.
You explain it very, very...
And that's what I'm saying, so that...
And I'm not going to go into in-depth detail on those parts for you.
No, I'd say if you have some highlights you want to point out, then that's fine.
Yeah, I'm probably going to concentrate, just so you know, for the... From what you have, I'm going to concentrate on the screens that have blue. They kind of have the report itself.
Because, all kidding aside, I think the way Scott explained it to not only us, but anyone who's listening at home, I think is going to be able to look at either chart and have a good understanding of what it is.
I do think he did an excellent job.
Yeah, I did need that translation. When I scrolled through originally, I kind of panicked and shut my laptop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
They can't hear it, though.
We have a couple of other tests, too, that we do.
They can see. Sorry. We're getting punished.
You've lost it.
Oh, sorry.
Liz and I can't sit next to each other.
Well, we had to.
Their attention span was...
Okay, so here we go.
The data is not that...
Whoops. So, go to the blue pages.
Yeah, so you're going to go... I'm going to spend most of my time on those. I'll probably walk you through the other ones just very briefly. So, what we do at the middle school is we do NEWA. Again, we do that grades five through eight. We also do that only in the fall for the exact same reasons of all the testing that's being done in the spring. SBAK, we do for grades five through eight in the areas... Oh, we did. That's the old testing. Now, we do the New Hampshire SAS. Math ELA. And this year, we're doing science for New Hampshire SAS in grades five and eight. NECAP, we used to do in grade eight. And we actually have some data on that that I'll share with you. AIMS Web, we do reading and math. We did do grades five through eight at the beginning of the year. We have cut back on that. We do... We test all of our fifth-grade students when they come in. We then meet with our... We call it a chat team, like they have the ACAT team. We look at all that data. We use that data to put kids, if they need to be tier one, tier two, tier three, tier two and tier threes, are progress monitored and benchmarked and put in some special programs that I'll get to as I proceed with this. And so, we only do that, and we'll benchmark them at all three points throughout the year. But though... Only those students. And after that, we don't test after fifth grade unless there's a need in grades six, seven, and eight. We do... So, we'll be looking at data trends and how we respond to that data. So, Scott gave you a lot of really good information on the NEWA. So, I'm not really going to spend a lot of time on that. I will tell you that the NEWA is adapted. He did talk about that. So, it does... Once they get to a certain point, the questions are either increased in rigor or reduced to kind of meet that level so that we can have an understanding of where they are. One of the things that we look at when we're looking at our data is we analyze it in three different ways. So, first, I'm going to go through the NEWA data with you. We look at it, annual proficiency at grade level. So, we're looking, how are they doing at grade level? Then, we kind of look diagonally at cohort growth. And then, we look at the LMS versus national norms. And the reason that I think that we use national norms or have to is because this is one test that many that are out there that districts can choose to use. We choose to use NEWA. There are other tests out there, so the whole state isn't doing it. So, we're not going to get that kind of data. So, we look at the national norms for that. And we look at these data trends, and we really do work with them. So, in ELA, we pretty much see grade five, when they come in, how they're doing. And then, we look diagonally. So, we'd look eighty-four, eighty, eighty-eight. So, we end up that way. And fall of 2016, the fifth grade was scored a seventy-four. They went up slightly to a seventy-five. In grade six, they started off in the fall of 2015 in a ninety-one. Ninety-one, it went up to ninety-four. So, we look at the data in those different ways to try and... To see where our strengths and our weaknesses lie and what we can do to improve upon those. In math, we do the same thing. And we have seen some declines in math when we're looking at the NEWA. What we have to remember about NEWA is that because we do it in the fall, it's really reflective of the previous year's teaching. So, it looks like grade six, you know, might be low, but it might have something to do with what was going on in grade five. And we have made some adjustments to try and correct that question.
I just want to jump in on one thing. On the NEWA testing, when you go from one grade level to the next grade level to the next grade level, the proficiency level is not always equivalent. So, what you'll find in the NEWA, be a little careful about going, like, from, like, fifth grade, seventy-five, sixth grade, sixty-nine, and seventh grade, seventy-six. Because that sixty-nine may or may not be an accurate point. It may not indicate a downturn. You've got to go look at how they set the benchmarks nationally in NEWA. At least, that's my understanding of NEWA, six, seven years ago. I really looked at it seriously.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick... I'm sorry, you just came in. We only take it once?
Yes.
Yes.
My understanding in NEWA, doesn't it... They recommend twice a year to get a true scope of the system?
They do. And it was decided a few years ago that began... District-wide, that because of the amount of testing that we do, that we were only going to do it once. So, that was a decision that was made.
So, they do state testing in the spring.
My sense is what the principals are saying, that a conversation around testing and what tests we do and how frequently we do them. Do we do NEWA twice as a benchmark and then as an assessment of growth? I think that's a dialogue you folks should have and kind of land on how much testing and which tests you want for our kids. Yes, NEWA, I believe, recommended ideally is twice a year. And you take a look at the growth. And by doing it twice a year, the teachers get information about their classroom and how their classroom is changing over the course of the year. You can even do NEWA, do the short test three and four times a year if you want specific information. So, I think the NEWA... You have to look at it. And I think kids... We do weigh the pig way too many times in a given year to find out the same information, so to speak. That's kind of a coarse way of saying it. But information like growth, I think, is really valuable. But that's something you'll have to have a dialogue, I think, when Mike gets on board here.
I just... I mean, from personal experience, it seems I can get a lot more information from NEWAs than getting SBAC SAS tests a year after the kids are gone. They claim two weeks, but I don't know if I'll believe it when I see it. But NEWAs are pretty effective if they're done correctly, in my experience.
Nice question, too. In my spare time, my fun friends, who are also teachers, has the AIMS Web changed recently? Was... Is there a new... There's a new version or something like that?
Yes, it's plus.
Okay.
AIMS Web Plus.
Okay. So, are the trends that we see still valid since, you know, if we go back to the original, the first version, and then, all of a sudden, there's a switch in the test? Is there... Will the trends that we see translate? Like, are they consistent across both versions?
AIMS Web got... I haven't talked to you about AIMS Web yet, but it got much more in detail. The test got longer. It's web-based from what we had been doing. It had been paper and pencil.
Yeah.
We get much more information. So, it's not... It doesn't line up exactly to what we were doing when we were doing just traditional AIMS Web.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped in.
That's okay. NEWA also changed a few years ago, too.
Okay.
And that had a... Could have had an effect. But we are looking... The data that we have right now for NEWA is three years of the consistent test, of the newer test.
Okay.
I'm not going to, like Scott had done. He had gone through a lot of this already and explained a lot of it to you. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. If you... For a quick glance, when you have this in color, it's nice because we look at the yellow, green, and blue to see how we're doing. That's where we want to be. We want to always move towards the blue. And so, this, again, is by grade level. So, let me know if you see anything that you want me to talk about. And I would be happy to do it. I did the same thing that... Tom did the same thing that Scott did. He gave the overall, and then, he broke it down by each testing area so that we can... You know, you can really dive into this, and you can really go very deep to find out exactly where weaknesses lie. We look at this level to see if we need to adjust what we're doing. And so, that's why we included these slides along with that. So, we start with the reading and grade level and just keep going. So, you just saw the reading. Now, you're looking at the math for grade five. Then, the reading for grade six, and then, broken down into those areas, those different standard areas. Then, the math for grade six. And then, the reading for grade seven. And I think that if you look at this and you have a chance to compare it, you'll see that, like Scott, what's happening at Griffin, the students tend to gravitate more towards the high and the high average, which is what we're looking for. And they come to us already at that point. So, I think we build upon what they have done as well. And grade seven, this is math. And grade seven, we have a double math block, for those of you who may or may not know. That's to accelerate the students who are able to do that to be in Algebra I for eighth grade.
How many of those classes do you have?
Right now, we have three out of five.
But if they're...
And we look at it every year. And we're just looking at that right now. I pull the date. What I do... I can tell you what I do, if you want.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So, if only half of our kids are above average or higher, shouldn't it be two classes and maybe three, getting more...
This is one data point.
Okay.
So, we use multiple. We use this, and we go back usually two years.
Okay.
We usually go back two years of this. Right now, it would be smarter balanced because I'm not going to probably have... I might have the scores, I might not. And then, we also go by classroom performance. And we go from recommendations. And sometimes, parents request that their students be moved in. And we look at that, and sometimes, we move them in. And sometimes, then, we move them out. But so...
Because eighth grade, it gets a lot better in this.
And, yeah.
And that's following seventh-grade teaching.
Yeah.
It's... It has moved forward, but obviously, it's a continuation from what we saw at Griffin as well. So, it is nice to see. So, trends that we saw with NEWA, real quick. We saw growth in reading, which was positive for each grade level, cohorts grade five through seven for the teaching years. That's what... That we kind of look at that. So, we... So, for teaching years, we're looking at... Data-wise, it would be six, seven, and eight. Math was positive for grade-level cohorts in grade six and seven. Of course, in grade seven, we have that double block. And the other thing that really... That we see a big change with in our school is the curriculum materials. We have big ideas starting in grade six. And it's just... It's set up differently, and it has a different impact on the students. The rigor's increased. They start off with inquiry rather than waiting to do inquiry at the end. And it just seems to draw them in better. So, we have seen some improvements with that. We've seen that increase. Points of growth, which is where we think we need to do some work, is in grade five math. And we have done some work. I'll briefly tell you some of the things that we've done for that. We looked really carefully last year, because it was the second year we saw a decline. We looked at the practice test for the New Hampshire's assessment this year, a little bit earlier. We worked that in. We realized that an area that was lacking, we wanted to get... Was geometry. So, we wanted to embed that throughout the year rather than waiting as it came at the end. So, we did that. We also embedded fractions. We also embedded fractions. We started doing that a little bit sooner, and embedded that within the geometry. And that was an area that we saw a weakness in. We saw, for example, one of the problems was, they had to find the area of, of a garden, and all the sides, all the measures were in fractions. So they really had to think about that, because it wasn't a square or a rectangle. They had to figure out how to do that, and then, then work through that. And that was one of the higher-level pieces that we did. We also looked at the, at the Big Ideas book to see about the inquiry piece, and they do start with that in the beginning. And they have increased the performance tasks in grade five, to try and start to do some of that earlier on, rather than waiting at the end, as like an assessment piece, to try to get them to really engage with what they already know, and then have to try to really struggle and figure it out, and that's where some learning takes place.
Is Big Ideas available for fifth grade?
We just found out. This year it was, we just got a complimentary copy.
Oh, so you're not gonna use Envisions like the elementary school?
No, we just, we got a complimentary copy.
Well, it's obviously working in the sixth grade.
So there's a curriculum cycle, which is a topic probably for another time.
Add it to the list.
You're the new superintendent, right?
Interesting. And there is, there is a curriculum cycle, and it might be, it might be coming through, forward with that.
Do you like the way the Big Ideas is set up, better than the Envisions? Not to get into it?
Do I? And you'll recall that I'm not, wasn't previously a math teacher.
No, I know.
However, I've been in the classrooms when they've, the introductory piece has been that inquiry, and they are, they're much more engaged.
That's right.
So that's what I have noticed. And then they seem to have buy-in. So we'll see what happens. That, they'll, they'll go through that whole, there's a whole process they go through when they look at all that.
Awesome.
And that might be one piece that they look at. So, and they'll take our recommendations as well. Reading, we saw a dip last year in, I believe it was informational text, too, especially towards the end. So we had our, our teachers, our reading specialists, and our fifth-grade ELA and reading teachers meet over the summer. They analyzed some data. They saw some shortcomings in the materials we had there. They realized that we really needed to beef up our informational texts, and we were able to get NuZella. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but it's an information, it's an online program. They come up with, I think it's eight now, new articles a day, that they, that they range with different Lexile levels, so that students can read the same material at different levels. And we're hoping to see an improvement in that. So as we get the information in from the testing that we're doing, you'll hear about it.
They're high interest, too. They did one on Fortnite, and the kids couldn't stop talking about it.
Yes.
I mean, high interest, because that's the game they're all playing now.
Yeah, they're very, they really do.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Keep them with that. So then we do the state testing, as well, as everybody does. There has been a change in that from the previous years. It's two days rather than four for ELA. It's one day rather than two for math. In science, the KNECAP used to be three, it's down to one. So that's, that seems to be more tolerable for the students, and it doesn't seem to take, it's definitely not taking as much time. So we'll see how it all plays out. We haven't, this is the first year for that. And Tom provided you with some data on the new, on the Smarter Balanced testing over the past three years. And by and large, we're above the state level. This is for ELA. As I said, last year, we did see a slight decline in grade five, and that's when we analyzed what was going on within that curriculum at that grade level. They also have a separate curriculum, curriculum materials. We use StudySync for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and we use Journeys for the elementary up through grade five. And so that's where we saw there was a little, there was definitely a lacking when compared to StudySync for the informational task text. And that's when we brought in NuZella, and we're hoping to see an increase there, too. In math, I talked to you some about that. Pretty much, we've been above the state level, with the exception of grade five. We've taken a hard look at that. We continue to look at that. We have made a little bit of a gain from 2016 to 2017, and we're hoping, and we really see some positive gain as we get through this year. We'll find out. They're taking the math next week. So they haven't even taken it yet. Let me know if you have any questions. I know I'm going quickly. This is Smarter Balanced, and how it, we get some of the reports. We can, again, drill down into the nitty-gritty, student by student by student, which we do and our chat team, when we want to make recommendations for students who might need support at the tier-two and the tier-three level. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, because I think you can pretty much see what's happening, and it was kind of highlighted in the previous slide. They do have a score, and then they have claims. That's how they break it down for each area. Within the claims, there are different targets, so we can really drill. So the points of growth for Smarter Balanced, we exceeded the state in the areas, in six of eight areas. In math, grades six and seven overall. In ELA, grades six, seven, and eight overall. And in grade fi, in, for grade five, six, and seven, in writing. And the writing was not, was pretty strong in eighth grade, too. If you want to flip back and look, I'm not gonna do that, but it really was pretty strong. Our writing grades actually have, have been pretty strong. Points of growth, areas where we know we need to make improvements, grade five, again, and we, they did drill down to certain areas. Algebraic expressions is one, concepts and procedures, which they, they worked, and they embed those in the other areas now. ELA, again, we had that slight decline in reading, and we tried to address it through the increased informational text. Now, we have the KNECAP science. We will no longer have that. It will be the NHSAS again, and we will be testing two grade levels to see a five and eight. Five is taking it tomorrow. And so I don't have any information on that, but we do have the data from our KNECAP from the past three years, I think. And so what, what we look at, in a nutshell, for you, I think, because I think that's what we're getting, is a level four, the state didn't have any, so this is where you can look at state and town. We'd like to get some there. Level three is the next highest. We always like to be higher in these areas, as compared to the state, and we are. In level one, we always want to try and be significantly lower, because that's the non-proficient part. So we want to be looking at that. And we have increased, we also have, he gave the scatter plot for last year. We, we were above the state in all areas. Physical science was the closest to the state average, but we did well in earth, in space science, we did well in life science, and we did well in inquiry. So we were, we were happy with that, because that, that is an improvement for us.
And that was in fifth grade?
No, that's eighth grade.
Eighth grade, okay.
Fifth, last year, it was in fourth grade, but they've now moved it to fifth grade.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, gotcha.
It's a lot, a lot of information coming at you right now. Our, the points of strength, the scale score was above the state average in 2015 through 2017. And the inquiry and life science domains were strong for us. Physical science was almost at the state average, so that's an area that we'll be looking at, or we have, they have looked at, so. All right, AIMS Web. I'm not gonna go into detail, because Scott really did do a great job with that. I don't have the towering graphs, what did you call those? Those are my favorite, too.
Tier transitions.
The tier transitions. I do like those.
Crayons.
Yeah. So, but the reason is, is because we don't do them for all, all grade levels. AIMS Web is, we really use it more as a benchmarking and a progress monitoring. So benchmarking for students who are in tier-two, progress monitoring for students who are on the edge of tier-two, maybe going into tier-three, where they, they really need a lot of assistance. And, and the, and the test did change. So this is the old test, with the math comp and math cap, and then the reading was RCBM, which was, is like a fluency, and the reading is maze, is comprehension. And they are, I think, two, one, between one and three minutes long.
Yeah.
That has changed, and that was all done by pen and paper, or students reading orally to you. We have, we do have these graphs, and I, and you've, you've seen them. The target, we're pretty much consistently above with our median, which is where we want to be. Our targets have been pretty low. The students have, when we measure them, have, have done well. And I apologize, you weren't here earlier, but Scott spent a lot of time going through this, so. But if you have any questions, please ask. And these are just the percentages pulled out for you, just to show you that we, you know, the nine, we're looking at the 26th, the third one down to 74th and up, to see how we do. Those are the, those are really the, in the average, or in above-average range.
Do you look diagonal on this graph, too?
No. No. Well, we don't. We don't, because of the, we're not testing all the same cohorts of kids. Even though we're testing at each grade level, we don't test them all, we don't test all the students. So you have, that's where we, you have to be a little careful. We have the ability to go in and pull up all the data on every single student through the state, and we do that when we're looking at students, when we're trying to place them to see if they have needs and where they are, because we're able to drill down quickly for that, that particular student. So, but this is just a general overview. And he, this is our math. Again, we are pretty, pretty much like Scott's were. Our median is generally above. Our sixth grade was a little bit lower than the rest, but seventh grade certainly has done quite well. And with that target being down at the bottom, which is as nice as we'd like it to be. Again, we're looking at the third line down and up, so that's the, the top three, to see where they are, and then hoping that the vast majority of our students fall into that range. And we all, we do try to get them to increase, and we see that with our, when we drill in individually, and when we pull up some of our others. This is grade five. I'm just gonna show you, because we do test grade five when they come in. We want to see more on the blue end. We always want to go there until we get over to this last column. We want to see the at-risk is the red, and the not-at-risk is the green. The first one, oral reading fluency, is higher, and the reason for that is, you only have to do the oral reading fluency, the ORF, they call it, on students who have trouble throughout the test. So it's a very small number of students that we do that. And I think it was a total of 11 that were flagged. The test itself was flagged for that, and we will do that reading. That can give us more in-depth information of, like, decoding issues and things like that with, through the oral reading. And there's the math.
Glad you explained that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Math isn't like that. Math doesn't have just something that's called out if the, the rest of the test is not, is not good. So they don't have a separate fluency type of thing. So you're not gonna see that on that one.
I like the green.
And I'm gonna go on unless there are questions. Okay. Our trends in AIMS Web, in 2016, all grades, content areas, and performance levels were above the national norms, and we've tested just grade five. Our math scored at 87% proficiency. Points of growth, our tier-two and tier-three annual growth will be reported in June, and we might have the transition graph at that point in time. General, this is my last slide. General information is just that we have, we've implemented curriculum materials that have digital web-based pieces that go along with them. As we transition to a one-to-one school technology, we think that that will become more useful, especially as we differentiate and even go into personalizing of, of programming for some of our students. We've had increased opportunities to accelerate and remediate. When we meet in our, in our chat group, we really go over the data that's presented to us, and we make recommendations for students on a number of different areas. If we, we can't figure out if they're just not doing their work, or if there's a motivational issue, we'll put them in a program called Check-In/Check-Out, which is related to PBIS, where they come in, they get a sheet every morning, they have to see each teacher, the teacher kind of gives them a rah-rah, you did really good today. Try to make that personal connection with the students, that can sometimes have a vast improvement for those who need that connection. If we don't see luck with that, and students just are not completing work, they're not doing what they need to do, we have a program called AAP, After-School Assistance Program, where they do the same kind of thing. They have, they get a sheet each day, they have to check in with a teacher, the teacher says, you've completed your classwork, you've completed it with, you know, accuracy, you're good. Or, you know, you goofed off, and you're not, you haven't done what you needed to do, you're not working to your best capacity, you need to stay today, and you need to get that work done. We graduate students in and out of that program all year long. We run it, try to run it for at least 21 days to try and change the habit. We also have, for our tier-two students, and in some of our advanced students, we have a program called Ten Marks for Math. It's adaptive to what they need. We use that during enrichment. The math teachers kind of set that, there's a test they can take in the beginning to kind of set where they are. Teachers can assign areas of need, and they monitor that. They don't have to do any of the real correcting, it kind of does that on its own, but the math teachers monitor it during enrichment period. We have our reading specialists working with grades five and six students who are struggling in reading, with a program called Raz Kids. That, too, is computer-based. However, they, there can be other interaction with the Raz Kids. They can actually have students record their reading, so that they can check for fluency. And then our, in the upper grades, we have a program called Reading Plus, a little more extensive, again, runs with a reading specialist in the room, but independent, and they can pick and choose. That, too, will bounce back to their level, and, and help them build and practice reading. And there's a reading fluency piece with that. There's a lot of vocabulary that's built in, because it's higher, and they need that content vocabulary. We have really beefed up our STEAM programming, and there's a lot of math involved in that. So we feel that even though we have some students who struggle, we do provide them with supports in that class, with either PARRS, or accommodating different needs at, at different levels, so that they can participate in that. Every year, we do a PBIS goal-setting with our students, so we, we talk to them about their scores. We talk to them about what they need to do to increase their scores. It's a one-on-one. There's an adult in the building meets with every, every, every child. We're moving to one-to-one technology, which we think will help us focus on being able to address some of the issues with a little more flexibility. Because of the number of computers that we currently have in the school, we, the testing environments have changed dramatically. The first few years when we were doing Smarter Balanced, it affected our schedule for the entire school, and made students move to other areas. It was, it was a pretty good-sized disruption for us, for the, the school in general, for almost two months, because we test at every grade level. So that, the increase in technology has, has truly made a difference in our building. And we continue to look at our scope and sequence, and we adjust, as I referred to a few times, with trying to work that geometry in with the fractions, so that they're getting it throughout, rather than in isolation, as their, as their, their current curriculum materials suggest. We've, we've made adjustments to that. So that is pretty much that in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions, or anything I could answer for you? And you may have some later. Feel free to call me or ask Tom. I'm happy to help.
I think just an all the information was given, it's like, you know, we talked about, someone asked a question, do we test too much? It, it's almost like overload, like, just the amount of testing we do do.
Right.
You know? And I made a note of it, and possibly, once the new administration starts on, we can have a conversation as far, you know, with the new curriculum director, and, you know.
Are we going in the right direction?
Absolutely.
I think the big question is, are we using the data that we get to improve instruction and to, you know, to make changes, so that we're constantly improving?
I think, I think that we are at our, I mean, I, and I, I think we are. I think that we look at it, we look at it, we, our chat team meets twice a, a week, and we go over that. We bring in the advisors from the different programs, we bring in the reading specialists who are working with that. We talk to the math teachers who are running all that. How are they doing? Can, can we, because at tier-two, you kind of want them to get that boost and move them on.
Right.
And, you know, then we have other kids that might need that. So we are, we are constantly looking at that data. And our goal is, obviously, to move them, move them out.
To the green.
Yeah.
If you don't utilize the data, there's no sense of testing.
Right.
Yeah, we want them to be successful. And, and we have been. And so, and sometimes we have to keep them longer than we want to, because that's what they need.
Yeah.
And so we'll provide what they need as best we can.
Right.
And so, and we've tried to look at it from all angles. At the middle school, you know, you run up against different things. They might have some motivational issues, so we try to, we try to address those through our PBIS, or the, the Check-In/Check-Out, and the AAP. We're, we're trying to hit it from all angles.
Right.
We have fluid groupings in SOFA, in Title I math, Title I reading, the district programs. So they're always monitoring. I didn't mention, but we also use that, the SBACK, which I, that happened last year, so I didn't think of that for today. I thought, thought of this year's testing. But we use the SBACK, the AIMS Web, and the NWA testing, actually for enrichment as well, to try to find the students who are most capable and needy of a real challenge, you know, beyond regular classroom. So we use it in lots of ways.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you both very much.
Yeah. It's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Like Dino was saying, it's like, it's a lot more easy to understand now than-
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's a lot of information. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
You can head out if you guys need to. The next thing up is bus route schedules. Michelle supplied us with scheduling, and we're looking right now, and we're in the process as far as working those schedules and seeing what we can update. Yeah. And I'm also, I mean, I touched on the conversation as far as my thought, as far as the high school starting earlier, but part of what I'm waiting for, we were hoping the bus company would supply them by now, but now they're just starting, and that's ridership. I'm looking at some new numbers, so they're gonna start doing that for the next two weeks for us. Hopefully, the next meeting, we'll have a little bit more solid numbers. What's up?
I was just gonna say, I think, Jim, can you correct me if I'm wrong, because everything out there says it should be just the opposite, high school starting later.
It should. But we weren't working on trying to get the middle school to the point where they have hours.
Are we at the point where we double up buses, like high school and middle school starting at the same time?
Yeah. But again, once we get some ridership numbers in the next, hopefully, for the next meeting, we can have a little bit more conversation as far as bus routes and bus schedules.
Is that it for that one?
Huh?
Is that it for that one?
Yeah. And Corey is not here, but he did give us his report, I believe. He did.
Yeah, Michelle.
So if you have any questions, he'll be here at our next meeting.
Is there a man? Don't forget about that matter.
I know, it's the last one.
The announcement.
Who's this? Who's this?
Weird, why isn't there a manifest?
Michelle, did you want that back or no?
Yep.
Is there a manifest?
No, I don't need that.
Is there a manifest?
I do have one thing as far as from the BA. And we just received this today, I believe.
Yes.
Or yesterday.
Today.
Dear Superintendent O'Neill, it is my pleasure to notify you that your recent application to the Public School Infrastructure Fund established in IRSA 195, colon, 15 dash Y for the main entrance has been approved. Your award it reflects 80% of the project costs not to exceed $70,232. And that's for the GMS entry. At the completion of the project, please submit. If they'll pass.
Yeah. And Corey and I have talked about that. So he'll, he'll fill you in all the way. But, but essentially, the contractors, I believe, that are going to be working on the fourplex are going to be the same contractors that are going to be working on that GMS front end. So Corey can give you more detail on that. But there was, there's, there's quite a story here. The, the letters went in incorrectly a couple of times. And, and finally, we got the correct letter. So it's nice to get that $70,000, do some infrastructure. And it frees up some money to do some other things perhaps. But thank you to state.
Yep.
I have a question on the school safety.